Okay, at 6:30, I'm going to call our meeting back to order. Do we have a closed-meeting certification?
I do. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open-meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Page, seconded by Mr. Alcaro. Christine, can we have a roll-call vote, please?
Dr. Acuff? Yes. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion carries. Next, we will introduce ourselves.
Motion for Christine.
Oh, do we have a motion?
For Christine.
Oh, sorry, we have another motion coming out of a closed session.
Dr. Acuff? I move that we appoint Christine Thompson as our new school board clerk.
Second.
Okay, moved by Dr. Acuff and seconded by Mr. Alcaro. Can we get a roll-call vote, please?
Dr. Acuff? Yes. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Absolutely, yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Definitely, yes.
Vice Chair Lee?
Yes.
And Chair Carlson.
Yes, this is closed-meeting certification?
No.
This is Christine.
Poor Christine.
Thank you. So moved.
Okay. Motion carries, and I see back to Chair Carlson.
I'm sorry, I had to run to the restroom. Did we do the closed-meeting certification?
Yes.
Yes, we appointed Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Did we do roll-call?
Not yet.
Let's do roll-call, starting with Dr. Berlin.
Yes, this is Rebecca Berlin from the Whitehall District.
Kate Acuff from the Jack Jewitt District.
Jono Alcaro at large.
Gd Lee Ryvanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Graham Page Samuel Miller District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Snoothie Emmerling, Student Rep.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next up, we will observe a moment of silence. Next item on the agenda will be approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
That's so moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Page, seconded by Dr. Acuff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving swiftly along to item three on the agenda, which is our public hearing. Ms. Osborne will be moderating public comment or public hearing. I'm going to pass it over to you, Ms. Osborne.
Okay. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign up with the clerk, Ms. Christine Thompson. Sign-up is available beginning 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 3:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol: state, name, and address, or your voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. Color-coded light system is used to time the presentations. The yellow light means the speaker has been talking for two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic, be limited to those who have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the school board are not allowed. Tonight, we have one speaker, Ms. Heidi Gilman Bennett.
My name is Heidi Gilman Bennett. I'm a resident of the Samuel Miller District. I'm the parent of two students in ACPS. I'm an active volunteer with various advisory committees and organizations, but I'm here tonight speaking for myself. I would like to offer my support for the proposed budget investment in reading specialists and interventionists at all schools. The staffing you've proposed helps ACPS both meet and exceed the Virginia Literacy Act requirements. This is a substantial financial commitment that is very much needed. Prior year budgets had allocated so few middle and high school staff to meeting student needs that, for example, Journey has a single full-time reading specialist trying to serve over 200 students, which is over one-third of the school enrollment. Henley has no full-time specialist, so the amazing, but still human, teacher is trying to serve 181 students in only eight hours per week. Staffing levels have clearly neither met student needs and put teachers in situations where they cannot be successful. I'm also a former reading teacher for elementary. I fully support ACPS beginning to shift to SOR, Science of Reading-Aligned Instruction, as well as the audit that's underway. That said, we have a lot of students right now, too many, who are struggling in reading and math, and without this proposed budget investment, ACPS is relying too heavily on families spending time and money to find tutors or pay for private schools, which is clearly not equitable. So, yes, the reading and math struggles disproportionately negatively impact children from low-income families, those who are black and brown, who speak limited English, and those who receive special education services. But the increase in this budget was going to serve all students, because maybe 60% of kids rely on schools for code-based, explicit, systematic instruction to learn to read proficiently. And even if our kids had been receiving that type of instruction recently, there would still be 10% to 15% who need intensive intervention, including those with dyslexia, for example. These are students who really need highly-trained reading specialists and interventionists with dedicated time to supporting classroom teachers and delivering differentiated lessons in addition. Thank you for proposing to make this important investment and for continuing to examine the data so that teachers and families can work together effectively to ensure all kids learn and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Gilman Bennett, for coming to that. I do want to tell you, I think you have the distinct honor of being one of the only people to speak at our budget public hearing in...
I was going to say, congratulations, Heidi. You've broken our five-year streak of no public comment on the budget. Thank you.
Although, I will say, people have sent in emails. We've read those, and they have sent in comments, but still impressive. That brings us to our budget work session number three with Ms. Maya Kumazawi. Kumazawi, sorry.
Oh.
Kumazawa. How long have I been? I'm so sorry.
You're good.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. It's because I'm very... Yeah, sorry. I knew it was wrong. Did I say... I'm saying it's ready.
All right. Hi, I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and I'm here to facilitate work session number three. This is the third in a series of three, and today's objective is to continue our preparation for your approval of the funding request next week on March 9th, as well as to prepare for your presentation to the Board of Supervisors on March 13th. The funding request presentations have all centered on the strategic plan and knowing every student. You'll see that tonight's work session will focus in particular on Goal Three, Thriving Students. Oh, Goal One, Thriving Students, excuse me. This evening, we'll present on the proposals that relate to growth and demographics. We will hear from Craig Domer, Director of Instruction Tiered Supports, Lauren McLean, Assistant Director of ESOL World Languages and Homeschool, Kevin Kirsch, Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services, and Katie Campell, Director of Special Education. In the second part of the agenda, we'll present the FY24 proposals that relate to safety and security. Kevin Kirsch will continue, followed by Jesse Turner, Director of Student Services, and Lindsay Snoddy, Director of Building Services. I'll wrap up the agenda and cover our other proposals and requests for information. I also want to thank and acknowledge all of the staff who are present here this evening as their input and expertise have contributed to the development of all of these budget So, to introduce the budget proposals that are related to growth and enrollment, I'll bring you back to the slide that Dr. Haas presented two weeks ago. This slide shows our enrollment changes over the last decade. And then, over on the right side, you can see that the number of students has increased by 6.9% in that time period, but our special populations, including students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and English learners have far outpaced that 6.9% growth. So, as we continue to see growth in all of these areas going into next school year, we have proposed budget increases to address our increasing needs with the Division so that we can serve every student. The first budget proposal, we call regular enrollment growth. So, this represents changes in projected enrollment from FY23-adopted to FY24-draft, and this adds 14.4 Full-Time Equivalents, or FTE. That includes 3.5 FTE for the continued expansion of our Elementary World Languages program and one FTE for an additional school administrator at Albemarle High School. By continuing to adhere to our established class sizes and staffing standards, we continue to stay aligned with our strategic plan. Here's a historical look at K-12 enrollment for the last 20 years. We've steadily grown from about 12,000 students to 14,000 students in FY20. During the pandemic, we dropped down closer to 13,000, but have been on the same steady pace of growth since then. Next year's projection for K-12-only is 13,721. Staffing standards and positions that incorporate student enrollment growth and changes in the free and reduced lunch rates are listed on the left side of the slide. These are all school-based positions, and the staffing levels can go up or down depending on the school and their projected enrollment for next year. While overall, as a division, we're experiencing overall growth and also an overall increase in economically disadvantaged students, there may be individual schools that are seeing different trends that don't reflect that. And then, on the right side of the slide are also school-based positions, but these are not included as part of our regular growth. Any budget proposals for these groups are typically shown separately, as the management of these positions is a bit more nuanced, and they'll be presented separately as well. So, here's a summary snapshot of how the regular enrollment growth budget proposal is developed. Budgets are based on projections and budget-to-budget, so when looking at next year's budget, we're comparing it to the '23-adopted budget, not where we are in '23 in actuals. The change in the orange dots represents that budget-to-budget change. So, in the current school year, we projected 13,648 students, and we're projecting to add an additional 73 students to that for next year. This proposal maintains our low-budgeted class-size ratios of 19.55 to 23. In addition, we do project the percentage of our economically disadvantaged population to increase from 29.6 as budgeted this year to 31.9 budgeted for next year. These factors, when combined with other staffing standards, result in the addition of those 14.4 FTEs division-wide. As a review from work session number one, comprehensive staffing standards are included in Section G, if you want to refer back to those, and then, page G18 is where you can find the detailed, school-by-school, position-type-by-position-type allocation of where these FTEs will be staffed next school year. Are there any questions about this?
Next, I'll introduce Mr. Craig Domer, Director of Instruction Tiered Supports.
Good evening. I'm Craig Domer, Director of Instruction for Tiered Supports. I'm here tonight to talk about the budget proposal around a change in our differentiated staffing. Differentiated staffing has been part of our budgets for many years, and it's an allocation made to schools based on their free and reduced lunch percentage and the total number of students at the school. This budget initiative adds 13.5 FTEs next year for a total of $1.2 million, aligned to the strategic plan for thriving students, affirming and empowering communities, and Principals in the past have made decisions around differentiated staffing, mostly to achieve the same goals that are listed up here, mostly to reduce class sizes and keep them in line with board priorities, and to provide direct intervention services and tiered supports that support each school building. As part of the restructure, we have eliminated the cap off the largest schools, and we have rounded up to the nearest 10th, and we have also made sure that reading specialists are available at every school in the county. We've also provided some further guidance as to how that differentiated staffing should be spent in order to meet each of those goals. The fiscal year '24 baseline has 114.2 FTEs for differentiated teachers, and in our proposed budget, we are reducing class sizes. We have to add 2.4 FTEs for teaching assistants, 38.5 for reading specialists, and 25.2 for tiered supports, for a total of 127.9 Full-Time Equivalent Employees. In addition, there's funding that's provided from multiple sources. Intervention, we get direct money from the state through PALS, learning recovery, algebra readiness, and project graduation, which creates this total school funding amount for $1.4 million. School administrative teams use that money primarily for after-school tutoring or additional tutoring that students might need that's not part of regular staffing. And at the bottom of the pyramid, about $19.1 million on 200 Full-Time Equivalent Employees, which includes the previous slide, as well as our Title I, which is federally funded, 18.1 FTEs, and our English learner teachers, which we're proposing 50.3 FTEs. There are pages in the budget book this year, G20 and G21, that we've tried to simplify the staffing chart for how we provide tiered services to make that more transparent as we take these initiatives to try and make sure that the resources provided to schools are more equitable in helping our students achieve academic success. I'll pause here for questions.
So, this might be in this G20 and G21 that I may have missed, but I was just confused because in the logic model, it says staff will be hired and assigned to fill these positions, reading interventionists, classroom teachers, or other tiered services, and I just wasn't sure exactly what that meant. What would those other tiered services be if not reading interventionists?
Schools could use them maybe to provide some additional SEL support, or math specialist, or sometimes they use their PAL staffing in addition to their tiered services to really focus on K1 reading intervention. So, that's also typically where we might find interventionists or tutors who are not certified reading specialists, but maybe were exemplary classroom teachers who are providing tiered supports to maybe tier-two students.
And so, this is just staff who will be hired under this restructure are above the original differentiated staffing, like the base that we...
That we would have funded in previous years, yes.
Okay. Now, will the money... Will the positions that are in the base that we would have funded in previous years also be in these groups of teachers or staff?
Yes, I believe the base staffing was subsumed into kind of those categories.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, in those schools in which we did have a slight decrease in either teacher assistance or in teachers, will the staff still be adequate to ensure that the reading interventionist will still be able to work and that all of the, like, tier-one, tier-two, all of those things for meeting our students' needs will still be met, right? There won't be any loss of services for any of those schools that might have had a slight decrease in positions.
I don't anticipate that we would have any school that's going to lose services. I think if they lost enrollment, at minimum, these numbers are staying the same, school to school.
And that was a great question, Mr. Page. One other thing that had occurred to us as we were working on the substitute initiative was, over the past few years, we have had to tap support staff, oftentimes, perhaps a reading teacher or an interventionist, to take the place of a teacher when we didn't have the substitute. So, as the board has been funding the permanent subs at the schools, often those are the schools that already get, like, they're already getting hit one time because they need extra time and support, and then, we would need to use the interventionists to cover for teachers. So, that's getting better as well. So, I thought that was a great question.
All right, then I'm going to pass it off to Lauren McLean, who will talk about those 50.3 FTEs for English learners.
Thank you. This is pretty straightforward, Craig.
My name's Lauren McLean, and I am the Assistant Director of ESOL World Language and Homeschool. But today, I'll just be talking about our English learners. So, in the past, we have been called the ESOL Office, which stands for English to Speakers of Other Languages. We're reframing this now as English learners, both to align with VDOE language that they are using, but also so that we are centering our thriving students in our work rather than our certification or what we are teaching. And so, this year, we are proposing adding eight FTEs largely to meet what we are currently seeing in our classrooms as a result of our continued increase in population of EL students. And this will ensure that we are affirming and empowering all of our communities with equitable and transformative resources so that we can create thriving students. And so, if we look at our EL growth, we can see that we were quite close in terms of last year's projection. We've exceeded it slightly, and then, that our EL instructional staffing has not really kept pace with the amount of growth that we have seen across the Division. And so, while we are confident in our projection for next year, the EL environment is a lot more volatile than some other school populations. There are some moves occurring within our community, specifically around what's happening in Southwood, that impact where families are, but also, there are international events that impact our community, specifically the evacuation from Afghanistan and the continued impact of migration there, just as well as US political climate and some of the immigration policy there. And so, when we look at our schools, what we're seeing is an increase across our Division in English learners, but particularly in our northern feeder pattern, and that's been especially in our schools like Baker Butler and Lakeside and Hollymead, as well as Albemarle High School, as families have been moving into areas that are up near the airport. And so, as we see that, we have also seen some expanding populations, specifically of newcomer English learners, which are students in their first year of having English instruction in the United States across the Division. We have students who are served by Refugee Resettlement Services in all of our middle and high schools at this point, and so, those students require some extra services and support, and currently, the staffing at some of those schools does not allow teachers to provide it as much as they would like to. And so, we're seeking to add eight positions that would work in these different schools so that teachers are better able to support the needs of all of their students, and in particular, our continuing and increasing newcomer population. And I'll pause here for questions.
So, I'm definitely in support of this and of all of your good work. One thing that struck me when I was looking at this and also the students with disabilities part of the funding request is that these are... This is a population where we have traditionally underserved our students. So, you know, when we did a lot of work around SOLs and we saw just much bigger gaps across the state, I'm sure you know well, and I just am wondering what we're doing to close those. I don't see the same kind of logic model stuff on this one that I saw on some of the other ones, and so, I'm just curious about that.
So, one of our big focuses there is how we can ensure that students are receiving access to the grade-level content, and so, part of the staffing is to create more environments where teachers can co-teach with general education teachers, and so that the students aren't being pulled from a service or from a class like math to receive different instruction, and so, they're able to get that high-quality grade-level instruction our math teachers provide with the scaffolds and supports that the EL teacher can provide in that classroom setting.
Is there... Can we get a deeper dive into how our English language learners, English learners are doing, and then, so that we can track that, because we just don't have a good sense of that? And I just want to be able to put goals around that as we have for other populations, because it seems like we haven't done that. Absolutely.
Judy, because I'm always trying to populate... I mean, Ms. Lee, because I'm always trying to populate our work session topic. Do you think that would be... You want to see, like, a future presentation on?
I would like that, yeah.
Okay, I would second that. I'm going to go ahead and add that to our list.
Okay.
So, do the math for me quickly. So, we're adding eight to cover an additional expected, how many, English learners?
So, it's actually not to cover the additional how many we expect. We're actually staffing based on our current year numbers.
Okay, to catch up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And where are those... Do we know yet where those positions will be added, or is that... Will that be determined after the fact of the budget?
We have some proposals for where those positions will be added. It's pretty much across our schools, but particularly with a focus on secondary, because we see both a really concerning trend among graduation rates for high schools and then for our SOL scores, specifically in math, for our middle schools.
I was just going to make the comment about the numbers at Albemarle High School and just knowing the number of subjects that those teachers are trying to cover in language other than their own, and how are we going to make sure... Thinking about how we best support those teachers in meeting the students' needs, especially when they're coming in, you know, for first language, English, in the middle of the year.
Well, I was just going to ask, how flexibly do you move your ESOL teachers around? Because I do... Because I do know that some schools, like Greer, I was just there last week, no, I think it was earlier this week, the days are running together. I know that they can have over 100 newcomers during the course of the year. How, how does the staff even adapt to that?
Yeah, so we have some positions that are based out of my office so that we're able to deploy teachers where it makes more sense depending on any shifts that we see during the school year. We also look at some of our populations that are more mobile and strive to staff them based on who they see overall throughout the year. So last year, in the summer, we realized that Greer was looking like they would be, like, they were currently staffed well, but we knew the population would be coming in, and so we added to their staffing in the summer. This year, we're proposing keeping that staffing that we increased consistent. That way, Greer is staffed based on who we're currently seeing there.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I can go ahead and turn it over to our special education team, Kevin Kirsch and Katie Compel.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Kirsch, your Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services, and I'm gonna give a general overview and then turn it over to Katie Compel, our Director of Special Ed, to go a bit more deeper into the pre-K through 12 portion of the superintendent's budget, and I'll come back and talk about Children's Services Act to finish up with this portion. So special education is asking for 11 FTEs, which is over $1.1 million, to meet the changing needs of students with disabilities in our public schools. And in addition, we are looking to transfer to the IDEA fund this $330,000 that makes up a gap for our, as Katie will explain, our A Base teachers that are funded through state and federal funds. So it's expected to be a gap, that's what that is, looking to keep those positions whole, consistent, and that we could count on those folks, and they can count on us throughout the year. And just for reference, we are looking at page A36 and 37 in G19 in our budget book, and I will turn it over to Katie.
Good evening. I'm Katie Compel, Director of Special Education. The special education funding request is broken down into three components. The first component is early childhood special education, what we call ECSE, otherwise known as preschool, for students with disabilities. In front of you on the screen is a set of data that at first appears to show a decrease in the number of students served in early childhood special education. However, there's context needed to provide a full picture. In prior years, most of our early childhood special education classrooms ranged from self-contained to minimal levels of inclusion, with eight students with disabilities and a maximum of four peer model students. Those peer model students were students without disabilities. In the last two years, we have shifted to increase our inclusion opportunities to a six-and-six model, meaning six students with disabilities and six peer model students or students without disabilities. This shift is in alignment with the Virginia Department of Education requirement and has also increased our ability to partner with the Virginia Preschool Initiative, Bright Stars, and other community partners. We are asking for two FTE, one teacher and two teaching assistants, to open an additional classroom in addition to our current 11 classrooms in order to support an increase in inclusion opportunities for students with disabilities. The second component of the overall request is for our A Base model. A Base stands for Building Appropriate Supports with Evidence for Students with Autism. In front of you on the screen is data that shows the increase of students with autism over the last five years. Not only have the number of students increased, but the intensity level of service that the students are requiring has increased as well. We are asking for FTE to provide four additional A Base model classrooms. Increasing by four classrooms will allow us to serve more students with autism who have intensive needs, and also aligns with SEAC, the Special Education Advisory Council, their goal of students remaining in their neighborhood school as much as possible. This request will also support the continuation of our Intensive Support Center that opened last week. The primary disability area that the Intensive Support Center serves is students with autism. This center was created to parallel the level of services provided in community private day schools while allowing students to remain in Alamo County Public Schools. Last week, the center opened to secondary students. This request will allow us to continue the secondary program next year, as well as open an elementary intensive support program. The third component of the overall request is related to CSA, which Kevin will talk about next.
Thanks, Katie. The Children's Services Act is a funding mechanism at the state level. The state provides matching funds at about 49% to, for localities. For students that are eligible for special education services but cannot be educated in the neighborhood schools, their needs exceed what we could provide in order to be an appropriate program, appropriate setting. So we're looking for an increase of $500,000 for that transfer, which would total $2.9 million next year. Here's some data to support that request. There are two parts that I believe justify this increase. One is that there is an increase in the expected number, just the sheer number of students that require private day and/or residential services through special education. The other is, much like that you and the division has been doing here locally, is trying to meet the need, right, of employees. So the, the cost of tuition has increased as well, as private providers are looking to meet their market for employees. So we are seeing increases on that side. So not just frequency or the number of students, but also just the cost of tuition and related services for students served in private day or residential programs. Any questions with regard to the special education portion of the superintendent's budget request?
So as I mentioned earlier with the English learners, the, the logic model for these makes sense with these requests, and it seems very responsive to the SEAC report, which is great. But I am wondering about the students with disabilities who are outside of the base programs, who are outside of the intensive needs programs, and their outcomes, because, again, there was that huge gap in how they do compared with their peers across the state. So I would like to know, just doing quick math, A Base had 233, I'm guessing like 1,500 students with disabilities outside of A Base, I'm gonna guess. So I, I want to know what we're doing for those students to ensure that their outcomes come up, just as we're doing with this audit.
So we're doing, we have utilized specialists, for, for one, just like a tiered approach. So we have autism specialists, learning specialists in particular for the students outside of A Base, that has been going, doing ongoing evidence-based reading interventions, for example, or an Orton-Gillingham methodology that's been ongoing even this year. And behavior specialists as well. So outside of A Base, we still have B Base and even our C Base. So, and that's job embedded and ongoing professional development in these evidence-based practices to really bring, we're trying to bring everyone up. And working with our folks in instruction in general ed, because we do know kids are included more than ever, and the best practices that happen in our general ed classes benefit our, all our kids, including kids with disabilities. So it's sort of that, let's work collaboratively, which we are more than ever, and on top of that, using our specialist and job embedded approach with those evidence-based practices, which we'll continue to do.
That all sounds great. I just want to be able to track that and, again, set goals around where we are, where we have been, and where we can get to.
Mr. Kirsch, if I may, so what I'm hearing you say is, like, we should go back to the logic models and look at what the baseline data is, say, for this past school year, and establish a target for next school year, where we'd like to see the students to be in terms of math and reading?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Can I have a question about the location of the four new classes? Which schools or which sites will they be located at?
So those, much like my colleague prior to me talked, we have ideas where we would project, but we, we haven't ironed everything out yet, right? Look, space and working through all of those. That, that would be my response is, they're at elementary, and they're along the 29 corridor. That seems to have been the biggest need, but the exact locations, we're, we're still working through. Okay, thank you.
So just a huge thank you for putting this forward, as we know, children with special needs and their families are, have been even more than other groups impacted by the pandemic. And I know you guys, your teachers are seeing the results of that, so a huge thank you for bringing that forward. One question I have is on the inclusion on the early childhood side because of the findings of Virginia. So, you know, doing kind of reverse inclusion is good, but how are we supporting, I think we have one itinerant teacher, but how are we supporting those people who choose to keep their child in a, a local preschool or in, in a Bright Stars program?
With, with our itinerant and working collaboratively with our related service providers and even like our Bright Stars program is to try and support kids by using all resources that we have, speech, language, pathologists, our itinerants, and when we can, even assistance. So we have some blended programs as well. That's how we're doing, we want to expand on that to be more inclusive, because even reverse, reverse inclusion isn't considered by the state to be a true inclusion model. The kids don't, they don't get coded as such, right? So that six-and-six model, it has to be 50% or more typically developing students with our kids with disabilities in order to be considered inclusive. So that's when you, when Katie referenced the six-and-six model, that's what we're looking to do more of, and that itinerant work.
That's the first time I've heard a train ever in this building.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Good? All right. Is there some type of formal transition? Should I just jump right into part two, Safety and Security? We're good?
Absolutely.
All right. I will open up part two, Safety and Security, with a focus on mental health services. And this is a, this part of the superintendent's budget request is refer-
Mr. Kirsch, I'm sorry to interrupt. I should ask the board, does anyone want a break? I know we've had a closed meeting for quite a long time, starting at 4:30, or how are we feeling? I hear chip bags ruffling and... Who wants to take a break? Raise your hand if you want a break. Don't feel bad. Okay, we'll move ahead.
You raise your hand.
We will move ahead.
I'll take that as a little bit engaging here, that's all right. So, so for mental health services and our transition, we're, I'm gonna reference your budget book, A42 and 43. Specifically for this part of the request, the last two years have, well, this year and last, have been funded, if we remember, by an anonymous donor. And it paid for this Coordinator of Mental Health and Wellness, which was a gap. It was done in pieces by people that could fill it in, and this allowed us to truly target and focus our efforts on mental health and social emotional learning across the division. So we're looking to make this permanent, part of our team, as that funding starts to fizzle out. So this is one FTE for this position at a little over $116,000. Want to provide some data, some context, just on what has been accomplished over the two years, which, if anything, the takeaway is this piecemeal approach, the luck, if you will, to a division response, a consistent response in several areas. The first is with regard to the coordination of mental health efforts in our schools, which includes universal screening and monitoring of students with regard to their social emotional learning, which also includes issues related to mental health. Really taking a leadership role in working with a community provider to work in our public schools, work with procurement, contracting, and setting that up. And that is specifically with, and you'll see that data, it's HCA, that is Health Connect America, that is who, that is our primary provider of community services in our public schools that provide outreach services, an array of supports for kids in our schools. And then also being an, a leader in coordinating professional learning with assist, which is suicide prevention and intervention and awareness, and mental health first aid, and even taking a leadership role with Alice, which is that response to, right, let's just say, God forbid, violent acts on our campus, okay? But this position has been an integral part of those efforts. The other piece is facilitating work with school counselors to implement a really data-driven program focusing on improving outcomes for students. And again, that, right, the post-pandemic, just even our current culture, and all of the stressors that our kids are experiencing in our schools, we are looking to utilize the resources that we have in a most effective way. Also, playing a very big role in calibrating a division-wide response to crisis events. When I say crisis events, typically those are the loss that we've seen in our community, loss, grief, trauma. Previously, it was a siloed approach, right? A group of people did, and we worked as best we could, but now I would say we have, we have a division approach to crisis, from communication at the top all the way down to implementation of supports at the schools. And this position was instrumental in assisting to make that happen. And then lastly, alignment of the threat assessment process to prevent the pathway to violence. Again, it was this role that is redefining threat assessment. Previously, it was just, again, I even hate to bring it up, but, right, like shooter events on campus, which unfortunately is part of American culture, but expanded it to self-harm as well. There should be threat assessments for kids, should they, should they present that need? And this role has done that. And here's some data, again, just to reinforce the need to locally fund this position. HCA, again, referrals, the number of referrals that are going into our outside provider. Division-level crisis team, while, while it seems low, that, that is, it was a very large number this year and a very active. And then professional development, the continuation of ongoing support for our staff to address the needs that are in our school, not just through awareness, but actual nuts and bolts, things we can do that are evidence-based. In this next slide, I attempted, everyone loves a good pyramid, I, I attempted to at least put out there all of the different supports that are available in the schools, and how, at some level, our Coordinator of Mental Health and Wellness is interacting with these folks. Now, there are some on the outside, right, that, that it is more communication and some logistics work, but in others, it is direct support and direct logistics, demographics, working with them to get where they need to go. Tier one is interpreted basically, this, this, the way this is pitched, all of these individuals can flow up and down this pyramid. Tier one is typically where these professionals work with all kids. Tier one is typically where these professionals work with all kids in the general ed environment. Tier two is a more intensive need where a student or child has some exhibiting need for that group to work with them. And then tier three is the most intensive, is more intensive than tier two, and it's usually a very targeted, specific intervention plan or service. So just to give a sense of all that this position does to coordinate a division approach that is evidence-based and supported in an ongoing manner is is the ask is part of the superintendent's budget. Any questions?
Just a comment, I'd like to shout out to the anonymous donor who helped us fund this pilot. You know our address, but if you want to look, if you want to look at the evidence of the impact that that gift had to our school division, I think you don't need to look any further. As my colleagues know, I've been very focused on mental health. That is a prerequisite to learning and every all of the school counselors that I have talked to across the schools that I have visited have said they've never had more. Some of it is coming out of, of course, the COVID years, but some of it will remain. And and I think it's an incredibly important thing we can do. And I'm always in favor of proactive intervention early before we have more serious behavioral issues. So I think this is well worth funding.
All right, I'm going to turn over the next portion of the presentation to Dr. Turner, the Director of Student Services.
Good evening. I'm Jesse Turner, Director of Student Services, and I'll be speaking with you this evening about safety and security. School safety is built on the tenets of having both strong procedures and adequate personnel. This proposal request continues to expand on our school safety initiatives. And you'll see with the slide, I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth about Title IX Coordinator, School Resource Officer, and Security Assistance. Okay. Students feeling and being safe in school is a vital part of engaging students in learning. As part of our continued efforts to ensure our students and staff are feeling safe at school, we are requesting additional supports. In 2021, in 2021, 22, you approved adding eight safety coaches for our secondary schools. We've developed a job description, hired coaches, provide provided continuous training, and we meet with them monthly to ensure they are using best practice strategies to promote student safety. Now, over the past two years, since returning from the pandemic, we have seen an increase in times we must work directly with the police department. What we found is that although we have multiple supports in our building or our buildings, there are some situations that oftentimes occur at home in the community that require us to have a closer connection with Alamo County Police Department. And the 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 addition of an SRO would would allow us to address certain situations faster, have faster response time, and be able to increase what we do to help young people who may be experiencing certain certain problems. And sometimes just things that occur at school. It just it just requires someone who has that training, that level of training. So we believe that adding a SRO to serve our northern feeder pattern schools will allow us to work directly with the police department in both proactive and reactive ways. Also, each each of our secondary schools use instructional staffing to provide school security assistance. This proposal provides those positions in a dedicated fashion to support student safety. These positions work with the school safety coaches and school administrators to monitor and maintain an orderly environment among students in and around the school campus. Finally, the Title IX rule and related laws, the requirements really require us to be able to serve students from K through 12. Title IX regs do not specify a certain age group. So we have at any given time the possibility of of having multiple Title IX cases from kindergarten to 12th grade. And and we've actually had those. We have multiple formal reports that are submitted by parents. And it can, the average case can can take up to 120 days. And it requires someone to to be able to specifically coordinate the efforts of the Title IX team, whether it's the investigators, the decision makers, the individual who would be in charge of informal resolutions. There's there's a team of of individuals involved with the Title IX process, and that coordinator position is 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 critical. Now, in this slide, you'll see the pyramid. I think you've seen a lot of those this evening. But when looking at tier one, the request for security personnel, that's that's where our security assistants would, that's where they are on the pyramid. The SRO is tier two, Title Title IX Coordinator is tier three. I do want to go back to the security personnel. I've had this conversation with multiple people around the county. There's a reason why safety coaches do not have security in in their title. Security is not their main job, and we have to make sure that people understand that. That's something that I have to repeat quite often. They work at a level where they engage in restorative practices with students, a higher level of 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 counseling when students are having or going through a major issue where where our security assistants are more of the individuals who move around the building. They are all over the building, they're doing lunch duty, they're they're keeping eyes on just the safety and security of the building, but they do not engage in the level of work that the safety coaches engage in on a day-to-day basis. So 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 there's a difference, and I've had some people question and try to figure out what what's the difference, but there is a difference. Okay. I do want to point out that when it comes to safety and security for the division, the third bullet on the left, the Superintendent's Safety Advisory Committee, I meet with them periodically throughout the year to share what we're doing, also to 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 collect their thoughts in regards to what they would like to see happen or or what initiatives we might be open to rolling out to to try to help keep our schools safe. One of the major initiatives that's been talked about is the safety film to put over the glass. And and I've been working with Lindsay and and we're we're in the process of trying to roll that out, more so a pilot, not everywhere at once. But we want to collab with people, we want to understand what their thoughts are, what what their fears are, and then try to move in a direction that addresses some of their concerns. So that's a very important part of of our safety processes is working with that committee. Okay. And there's a noticeable increase in student discipline incidents locally across our region and across Virginia. And I know that you all have looked at the slides and and in Raco County, which is close by, there was a story regarding what what they are experiencing. But I would like to highlight that here in ACPS, we've 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 had a 12% increase. Many of our students are struggling, I do believe, like we've heard before in so many other areas, the pandemic, COVID, there's been a lot of trauma. We we have multiple families who are who've been evicted or they're up to be evicted. We have many families in the city of Shawesville who are having to move to the county because of housing issues. Students are struggling to make the transitions. And we we I believe that those are some of the reasons why we've seen the increase. Also, something that's not not very, very positive, I do work very closely with Alamo County Police Department. It's nothing for me to be on the phone with them at 11:30 at night, 2:00 in the morning, 5:30 in the morning because of something that's occurred. We've we've had five students in our school division to be shot within 12 months. Those things are coming into the school. Our children know when their classmates have been shot, they're upset, parents are upset. And 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 part of our our request for these positions is to try to have the right people in the right places to try to help with some of the work that we need to do with our young people.
You need to make it clear they weren't shot at school.
They were not shot at school, yes, then they were not shot at school, but in the communities. So some of our students are experiencing some very difficult situations at home, and and it's causing issues in our buildings, so with what they are experiencing. So that's that's something that I'm concerned about and many of the people that I work with are are concerned about as well. And I I think that as we think about that, again, I just want to make sure that I'm clear that these positions that that I'm asking to add to our safety team, they have a specific role in 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 helping the the day-to-day operations of our school and and to make sure that children are learning because children have to feel safe, they have to have their their issues addressed as best we can before learning can really occur. Okay. And let me see. The security assistant, I do I do want to say that the proposal would do at least four important actions. Create a division, funded staffing standard for security personnel at all secondary schools, add security personnel to schools for uniformity of coverage, return instructional staffing to schools that have been using instructional staffing FTE for security personnel, centralized oversight of security personnel to ensure proper training and effectiveness. I talked a little earlier about where security personnel fall in terms of the pyramid. That's sort of the first line of defense in terms of working with young people throughout the school. The safety coaches are part of tier two, just like the SRO. Okay. A 2022, 23 student discipline data would be a baseline because the state overhaul of the model, discipline guidelines, and reporting codes. Currently, each Monday, a cross-functional team reviews suspensions from the prior week to determine the status of each student and what is the next step. The team is also working to ensure that the step program is being used with fidelity at each school. ACPS has established a division-level threat assessment team to ensure correct procedures, consistency, and follow-up. And right now, I'm working on that with Mr. Miles Nelson and Carl Murray. They're the court of that team, and and we're getting ready to build that out. So but that'll be coming from out of Student Services. Region Five is requesting state-level benchmark data similar to the school quality profiles and exploring the possibility of a restorative suspension center similar to what's being done in Lynchburg. And I would just like to add that that what we're seeing is that when students are out of school, they oftentimes are totally disconnected from instruction, totally disconnected from services. And sometimes maybe they do have to be out of their regular school, but we would like to have them still connected with instruction, still connected with services as best as possible. And also, just just being able to receive some of the things that they need to receive in order to just function. When many of our students are out, it's it's a safety issue for them. Sometimes they're not eating, and 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 we and we just need to keep them close to us regardless of maybe what they've done at their regular schools. And in conclusion, this graphic shows how our tiered system works and how we work day-to-day to keep students and staff safe. And you'll see a variety of different positions and interventions, programs. It's not a comprehensive list, but 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 these are some of the core things that we do around safety and security on a on a daily basis. And are there any questions?
I think you answered it. You are working, the safety coaches seem to have some overlap with the mental health programming in our schools. And I think you say you're meeting interdisciplinary with Miles Nelson.
Yes, ma'am.
So on a day-to-day basis, how does how does that work between the two, the counselors versus the safety coaches?
Well, my safety coaches, I, they are not instructed to really get in the way of the the SEL coaches, but what happens is they develop incredibly strong relationships with students and students seek them out. So sometimes they are pulled into engaging into activities that that aren't really a part of their job description. But but what I've instructed my coaches to do is that to help the students get to the person they need to get to. That's that's the goal. I I I do not instruct my coaches to take over if it's if it's an area that's not within their wheelhouse, but for some of our children, that's who they want to talk to. But the goal is to get them to wherever they they need to get get to and to get to the people that they need to see.
What kind of professional development do we offer to the safety coaches?
Let's see, it's a long list. I'm sorry, restorative practices, several different mental health trainings. They've had, Miles has done several. They've had, Miles has done several.
Mental health, first aid.
First aid, yes. We've also, in terms of Title IX, all of my safety coaches have gone through the first phase of the A T I C S A, Title IX investigator training. They have their certificate. We are in the process of working with Ms. Megan Wood, who's the Director of Professional Development, to bring A T I C S A here. And, and we're going to engage them in the second phase of that training. So, so they're, they're, they're sort of across the board, but they, they receive training throughout the year.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
And so for the board, this was a logic model last year and it lists all the training they received through V D O E and V D J J.
Right.
So we can, Ms. Kumazawa can follow up with the board on the training they do.
That would be great.
That way if you see anything that you think, that you think they should be doing that they're not.
No, I just wanted to be assured that that was happening.
Right, right.
Yes, yes.
But we don't assume we know everything that's out there and you all have different backgrounds in the community that you work with. So if there's something that they're not getting that you think they should be getting, then we, we want to look into that. But we'll follow up with that.
I'm sorry to be hogging the mic, but Dr. Turner, can you just say, not everybody is familiar with how the Title IX regs have changed. And when you talk about cases, we're not talking about litigation. We're talking about incident reports and investigation or?
Right. Now, I try to, I try not to be too long-winded, but yes, once a, a parent sends in the formal paperwork, it is reviewed, it is determined whether or not it, it meets the level of a Title IX case. And, and then at that point, that's when we move into where the investigator is assigned, the investigator investigates and, and, and meets with everyone involved, the complainant, the respondent, the witnesses.
It's just a very detailed and time-consuming.
Very detailed.
Thorough process.
Yes, yes. Yes, it is.
Have a need for another person.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Turner, you've answered just about all of my questions that are here. One of the things I know you're trying to protect is to not have disruption to the learning environments in our schools. And those can be disrupted very easily. As regards the, thank you for fleshing out the security assistants and the Title IX coordinator. Just for the Title IX coordinator, that seems to be more of a compliance type of function, making sure we're in compliance with a lot of the, of the rules and regs as well as doing organization within the category. My question on both of these positions, security assistants and the Title IX coordinator, what qualifications do they need to make for you to consider them for the position? What qualifications do they need to have, I should say?
Title IX coordinator and the assistant?
Security assistants.
Well, with the Title IX coordinator, I, I'll be honest with you, after, it's very easy to be into a conversation with someone regarding Title IX for about a minute and a half and it becomes really clear that you probably should know something about the legal system. It's very difficult. There's some nuances there that really, if you have a background in law, it, 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 it can make the work much easier. Not easy, but easier to navigate. So I believe that with some of the cases that we have dealt with over the last 18 months, that, that's, 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 that's a qualification. I, I would like to see that, that someone has, has some working knowledge of the legal system.
So this would not be somebody who would be going out and doing the investigations?
Not necessarily. Now, the federal government does allow the Title IX coordinator to conduct investigations. But, but we have right now multiple part-time investigators. But if we needed that person today, they certainly could.
And for the security assistants, what kind of backgrounds are you looking for? What kind of experience?
Because we are a, a school, I'm, I'm, I'm not looking for someone to have experience in being a security guard in a jail or detention center. I'm not looking for that. I'm, I'm, I'm looking for someone who, who understands how to secure a school in terms of supervising the campus on the outside, the doors. I mean, you take a school like Alamo, we have about 100 doors that lead to the outside. Being able to work with young people who are experiencing problems, not, not losing their composure, especially with the older students. Someone who, who understands the, the mission of, of, of the division and that's trying to educate our children so they can move on and be able to experience all the things that they need to experience post-high school, that, 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 that's productive, being a part of the learning process, not, not, not guards. I, I, I want these people to be able to, to build relationships as well. But, but because they're not coaches, the emphasis should be placed on security, making sure all children are safe.
And these, these men and women would report to the coaches?
Well, the, the coaches could serve as the, not necessarily the supervisor, but, but someone who would, would help them with their day-to-day jobs. I, I think that there's a possibility that part of what the security assistants would, would do would kind of come out of my office and, and then partnership with the school. But they would, the coaches could be the liaison because obviously I can't be at all the schools and I have other job tasks. But I would communicate with the coaches and I would also work with the security assistants through trainings. They would see me more than they see me now because right now I don't, I don't really, well, I don't, I don't supervise them at all, but they see me when I visit the schools.
Okay, thank you.
So we can, we'll follow up there, job descriptions for both of these positions. So we can go ahead and get those to the board members.
I was just gonna say, I was at Western on Monday morning and had the opportunity to spend time in the school and talking, actually we're talking, we're there kind of arrival in, in between classes and having the, the opportunity to talk with Principal Suplet about the security assistants and watching them in action. And it was all about relationships. It really was. They knew the students by name. They, you know, for many of them knew what class the students should have been going to and were just kind of encouraging them, you know, like two more minutes. And, you know, I think it, it was very helpful and definitely seen as a, as a friendly reminder and not as anything more in the, and then I think the other piece of this proposal that I hadn't realized is the fact that those personnel were taken out of local school budget. So the other thing this will, doing this will do is we'll give, give those principals a little bit more flexibility with some of those staff. Because when I, when I mentioned that to Jennifer, she, you know, goes like, yeah, I'm gonna get a little, like, there's, like, what we will get back will be helpful. And I'm already thinking about how I could use those kind of positions and other names in other ways if they are now centrally funded.
Yeah. Okay, I have a question about the school resource officer. That person will be assigned to Alamo, Lakeside, Burley and Journey, correct?
That's correct. But Mr. Page, we, we also would like to have that individual be available to all of our schools if necessary. And, and, and I know some people may say, well, how can you go all over the camp? There are other ways to help, you know, via telephone, email, speaking with officers who may be closer to another school if there's a problem. But, but yes, we want to have the individual be able to move around, but mostly on the Lamb's Lane campus.
Okay.
Thanks, Dr. Turner, for your presentation. As I've said tonight a million times and probably a lot of times, I, I really want to make decisions based on evidence and data. And this is not meant to be a pop quiz for you, but I, I see that in our local survey data that some students and teachers do feel safer with S R Os. I'm talking about a 2020 survey that we had. But there is definitely a racial difference. Fifty-three to 54% of white and Hispanic students locally agreed that S R Os made them feel safer while 41% of black students agreed. With the question, the presence of an S R O makes me feel uncomfortable, 23% of black students agreed, whereas 13 to 15% of white and Hispanic students disagreed. So there definitely is the disparity there with our students. Also, the data that we've received, we, we haven't received a lot of data about the increase in student discipline and, and I don't know which of those required police intervention. I know that you, we've talked a lot about, you have a very close relationship with A C P D and I know that they've really supported us on things. But we've also, I, I tend to hear a lot about S R Os when fights have happened and in particular, because in my district it's A H S. But when I look at the data, we have about 40% fewer fights in the last two years than we had the last three years that we had S R Os. So I'm just, I, I'm, it might be that there's data out there that I don't know about and I don't see, but I, I'm looking for something that supports conclusive evidence that there is an increase of the actual level of safety on school campuses. Also from the logic model, I, I would like for that to acknowledge the disparities in race. Right now, when you're talking about 85% of staff and students in the northern feeder pattern will feel safe, it's easy to use majorities to hide what happens to minorities. So that to me needs to acknowledge that. And then I, I just, I would like to have, I would like to see research that's based, I mean, the research that we've gotten as, as a board has been about perception, which is not unimportant. But I would like to see research around school safety and incidents so that we can really think about this and dive into this. The other parts of your presentation make total sense. Title IX, a lot of changes. We have to keep up with those. Security assistance. I, I think we can all agree that we want secure schools, we want safe schools and we want for that not to fall on teachers and, you know, food staff or whomever. So I, I'm just looking for more to get that.
Okay. And, and if I could add too, I think one of the biggest misconceptions about the S R O is that they're there to break up fights. That's not what they're there for. In fact, I've, I've worked four different school divisions with multiple school resource officers. That's the last thing they're supposed to do. Us, the school resource officers are not there just to be muscle. They are part of our school safety team. When there is an altercation in the school, we don't get on the radio and, and scream for the school resource officer. That's, that's, that's not what we do. And I, and I think that some people think that, but that's, that's not it. Our school resource officers have on many occasions been the only adult in the building that some of our children ever wanted to talk to, as well as their parents. And I, I, you know, I, I do, I do want to say that when it comes down to African-American students and maybe how they feel about, about the S R O, I, I, I can't speak for every African-American child, but I, I want to say this. I'm from the city of Shawesfield. I grew up on 10th and Page, okay? There have been two shootings in my neighborhood within 10 months. I don't know how many of you all have ever seen someone shot, okay? But the first, I've seen someone shot before, but I also saw the young man a few months ago shot, pulled out of the car. His buddy shot in the chest, he's standing outside, blood gushing. Other child, a young man shot through the leg. There seems to be this belief that black people don't like the police. My mother is 81 years old and loves to be in her yard, but she don't want to run from bullets. My mom wants to see the police. I, I, I think that we gotta really look at and understand why we want the police around. We want them around because they're trained to deal with certain very, very serious situations. Black people are not afraid of all, of the police. There's good and bad in every profession. Okay? Some of our children are in school, they feel safer with the police, black, white, red, brown, they feel safer. Our police have a skill set that we don't have as educators. Most of us have never been to school or any training to be a police officer. But, but I'm somebody who grew up right in the middle of town, who dealt with and has seen a lot of violence. But until you see people shot and little children running from the bus stop crying because they seen somebody shot, you, you stop thinking about what happened in some other state and try to apply it to, to yourself. I think a lot of us took George Floyd and what happened to him was awful, but that, what happened to George Floyd can't speak for all black people. And if something happens in one of these schools and maybe 20 people could have been saved because an officer was there versus 20 people dying, I'd rather have an officer there. My teachers would rather have an officer there. My children would rather have the officer there. My parents would rather have an officer there. So I, I just, I, I would really encourage the, the board to think about that and, and think about me as somebody who's telling you the truth. I'm not telling you what I've read. I'm telling you what I know, what I've seen. And when somebody's been shot, that's an awful scene. If you've never seen it, that's not something I would want anybody to see. And people are scared. Any more questions?
Yeah, well, like he's, um, thank you for that, but, sorry. Along the same kind of line, what type of training qualifications or regulations would be in place to make sure that, at least that the students know that the school resource officer is there? Like what type of training would be, would they have to ensure that they can work well with students?
Oh, that's a wonderful question. We, we, the school division, Alamo County Police Department, we, we work very closely with the Department of Criminal Justice down in Richmond. Okay? And, and there is multiple trainings that they go through before they can go into a school and become an S R O. Okay? And the S R Os, that's a special unit. Uh, it's just like the Drug Task Force. It's, it's, it's not just an officer being pulled off the beat and told, "Hey, you gonna go work at Alamo High School." It's, uh, the, the, these, these men and women are, are highly trained to, to work in a school setting and work with children. Not, they're, they're not designed to be there to wait for a child to do something wrong and then read them their rights and lock them up. That's, that's not. In fact, we, we, we're getting ready for a big training in Hampton, uh, in July, and, and, and school resource officers will be there, as well as, uh, school security officers.
So the other thing I would add is that, and you haven't seen it, and we should, we should share it with you, is, um, Dr. Turner, um, our attorney, Ross, they've been working on updating the memorandum of understanding, and it really outlines a lot, and that was a great question. Um, it outlines, uh, the training that's required, how the officers are selected. So I think we want to make sure that we provide that to our student board members as well so you can take a look, and you would give feedback directly to Mr. Holden on what you would like to see in it, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Dr. Turner.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments. I know that takes bravery, I think, to say, so thank you for being firm in your opinion. I do want to echo, to some extent, um, the security assistance, absolutely. My mom is teaching in Alexandria. They, like, we do not have that here, um, but they have, they have gang issues up in, in Alexandria, outside TC Williams, the student, uh, student conflicts that happen outside of the building often roll in.
Yeah.
Teachers were asked to, you know, after a student was murdered, um, to man the doors to make sure that violence didn't come into the school. That's not okay for teachers to be asked to do.
Absolutely.
So security assistance onboard. My issue with the SRO is, one, I think the MOU needs a lot of work. The position feels nebulous and not really clear what purpose or how it's, so, so many of the things that you said where I have an issue is, the police are always at our disposal, they're, they're public servants. So we call the police in any of those, those incidents, and they're generally, we have a great response time, especially in the Lamb's Lane campus region. You would think you'd be more concerned in Western where it would take a police officer longer to get there. So that's where I start doing is just the, the logic model of although perception does matter, I want to make sure that what that officer is doing is, is clearly laid out and is actually producing the results that we want. Because absolutely, if it's going to be quicker response time, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessarily, um, true, that there's a quicker response time, especially if they're serving the whole northern feeder pattern.
We never can guarantee how quickly they can get there. That's, 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 that's the issue. I've, I've been on the phone with Randy, uh, with Captain Jameson several times, asking for support, and Randy gives me whatever I need, but the first thing he'll say is just, "I don't know who I can get there, and I don't know if I can get there, get them there quickly."
Like, I'd almost rather see, I'm just trying to think about how to be really strategic with how, how we approach our relationship with the police department while, while acknowledging what you said is true, and I say this as a person of color myself, um, it's not all black people are, are anti-police, that's certainly not the case. But when we, I mean, what are, uh, the stats I would like to see, when we have a police officer respond to an incident at our school, how often is it the same person? Because I'd love to lean into the police department and offer trainings on how you deal with children, um, versus training one individual who might not be even the person that is responding the majority of incidents in our school.
Right.
I'd love to see a partnership in that way over necessarily putting a body in a seat. And I'm not saying that's, also, I went to a conference where I talked to an SRO officer for a while, and you know, the primary thing he did in his region was drug, um, prevention, drug training. Drug training, that sounds bad, not training how to use drugs.
Right.
Drug prevention.
Right, 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 right. Well, I think you make a great point. The only thing that I would say is, the reason why we, we might not focus on trying to train every police officer on how to work with children is because, uh, our officers who are assigned to work in the community, that's, that's not necessarily their job. The SRO is another individual in the building who has the possibility of creating a tremendous relationship with students. I've had SROs who coach, I've had SROs who have fostered children from the schools. See, it's, it, it still goes back, see, to see, see, the crux of the matter is relationships. It, it's, 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 it's not the, the, the officer coming off the street, it's the fact that that officer's there every day, that's the officer I trust. So it all depends on do we, do, is, is that what we want or not, but we're going to get the most bang for our buck in, in, in how our police department works with children by them being there and the children knowing them, him or her. And I'm just saying that from my experience.
I think probably a lot of the issues I have could be resolved with a deep dive into that MOU, because that MOU, to me, did not necessarily feel like it was accomplishing the goals that we discussed in 2020. It's still very deferential to the police department for training, for selection, for, and, um, it allows us, I feel like, pretty minimum input, not necessarily, uh, decision-making capability with any of that. It has a portion in there where we will provide, uh, upon request, uh, what I would call evidence or information to an SRO officer, which seems like that kind of goes around what would be due process for children. It, so those are the kind of concerns that I'd want to see. I don't, it's not just because it's an SRO and we don't want SROs in schools, it's because when we do it, I want it to be done in a way that is, um, effective for the goals that we're hoping to serve. So if it's quicker response time, or if it's, um, having relationship building, although I'd love to see that with the security assistants, um, and the way it's being rolled out right now, sometimes it's seeming like maybe we're not really hitting those points, if there's only one officer, if it's only in one area, if it's spread out. So I just, maybe some of it can be resolved through back and forth at MOU. I would not want to see the school resource officer in place until we were all comfortable with the MOU that we have.
And I agree, the MOU should speak to what that individual's supposed to do. And Ross and I will work on that, uh, as well as pulling in Captain Jameson, or...
Yes, and I know, um, uh, Ross has sent the MOU out to all the board members to get feedback, and he's gotten feedback from a couple.
Yeah, and Mr. Holden, I will acknowledge to everyone in this audience, that feedback that I just laid down, I did not provide to Mr. Holden before this meeting. I was sort of waiting until we had our presentation and like an understanding of how we were feeling about the SRO, but this was not something that he just didn't respond, or that you, I just hadn't given the feedback yet.
Thank you, Dr. Turner.
All right. I'm gonna turn it over now to Ms. Snoddy.
I'm Lindsay Snoddy, Director of Building Services, and I'm here to talk about something that probably won't generate as much of a discussion, but the Filter Replacement Initiative. Back in the beginning of COVID, before students returned to our buildings, we did deploy almost fifteen hundred air purifiers throughout learning spaces, and also a little bit later, a hundred ISO cleaning units, which are bigger HEPA filtration units that are in the cafeterias and in the isolation rooms in the clinics that were being used for when sick children were in there. So people like them, we've had a really positive response, so we're looking to operationalize those expenses. The expenses that come with the filters are somebody to change the filters, and then the actual filter media that goes into the quarterly cycle that we have for replacing those. So you'll see those budget numbers in front of you. Although the HEPA filters were added in response to COVID, they do provide some benefit even when COVID's gone, it, it improves your indoor air quality. It reaches a level of filtration that even the best filters in our HVAC system don't reach. Our, our best sys, our best filters in the HVAC systems at the building level are MRF-13 filters, and that gets about seventy-five percent of the particles that are sized between point three and one micron. And you'll see from that quick graphic, um, that, that most bacteria and viruses are smaller than that level, but are captured, or ninety-nine point seven percent are captured by a HEPA filter level. So that's why we're proposing the continued use and the associated costs that do come with that, because it is a maintenance issue for us. Any questions on filtration?
How often do these need to be changed?
So there's a pre-filter that's changed quarterly, and then the HEPA filtration we change once a year, unless there's an issue. If it's industrial areas, it might, during construction, they'll get more impacted, so we change more frequently.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, this is prospective. Uh, in terms of our, our building of new schools, well, is this the same system that we would put in, or...
Are, typically with the building HVAC systems, because of the, the level of, um, it's tough to get a HEPA filtration system into, of commercial-grade system that isn't a hospital, just because of cost and the maintenance associated with it, so tip of the MRF-13 is probably where we'll try to reach with our HVAC sys, HVAC systems going forward, and increase outside air, which also helps.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. There are no further questions. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Krumuzawa to go over some other proposals.
I do want to acknowledge just the kind of, not silliness, but the switching you have to do to go from like, uh, in-depth conversation at school, and then I'm like, "Wait, point three micron, now I'm into science, so what am I, what's up next?"
So, um, in Section Three and Four, they're short sections, um, we didn't cover all of the proposals that are part of the draft funding request, um, just because they didn't fit into these larger proposals, but I just wanted to make you aware of them. One of those proposals is titled Full-Time Teaching and EDEP Assistance. As a pilot this year, we are offering one full-time position at each elementary school, and that position splits their time between school instruction during the day and EDEP services in the afternoon, and that's Extended Day Enrichment Programs, or After-Care Program. The EDEP portion is and will continue to be funded, um, by EDEP, as that is one of our self-sustaining funds, and the proposal moves the learning recovery, the one-time funding portion, um, the daytime portion, into operationalizing it in the school fund. This change would add approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars to our school fund next year as a recurring expense. And the impact that this pilot has had can be found in the logic model on page A forty to forty-one. Other new proposals that are included in the funding request are a position for the Albemarle Foundation for Education, a records analyst in the Department of Technology, and ten thousand dollars to kickstart the Student Voice Fund, as we heard about already in the funding request presentation. And then finally, half of an FTE in Fiscal Services, um, that was also previously funded by one-time federal pandemic relief funding. The description and logic models for these proposals are included in Section A as well. Are there any questions about any of these, um, other proposals?
Does the AFE position, does that also contain that finder's fee for the consultant?
We, um, budgeted, um, some one-time funding as a school board reserve funding in this year's budget, so that covers, um, any other expenses that we've incurred.
So the, so the one sixty-nine is not necessarily everything that, is not the entire cost of that one person?
No, that is the cost of the one person.
Okay, because that just seems a little high.
We can, yeah, we can look into that.
Yeah, so I was, but it makes sense if that includes a fee for the, a finder's fee, is what I'm saying.
No, that currently, as it's budgeted, it's for the FT, but I can dig into that and confirm that that's the right amount we should be budgeting.
I believe it, it, well, it's salary and benefits, which have not yet been negotiated with the person, so it could be less than that.
Not if they see this.
Pardon?
Not if they see this.
They're gonna know the limit.
Um, just as a note, we don't base any of our compensation packages on what's budgeted, they're handled separately, so.
Well, hopefully we get a wonderful person who comes in and fundraises billions for the school division.
Um, so lastly, we had a school board request to hear more about our adult education program, so I just have one slide on that. Um, we have two adult education programs that we currently offer, that's English Learner and Open Doors. The EL classes are multi-level English language classes for adult learners. The school board budget has an annual contribution of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars to support that program. Um, in addition, they also have, um, fees going in. Participants include members of the community, parents of ACPS enrolled students, as well as ACPS employees, um, through a partnership that we have with the Department of Building Services. And Open Doors is, um, separate and a self-sustaining program. This program offers recreational and enrichment opportunities for adults in our community, with fees ranging from being free to about three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per course. I put references to those budgets, if you're interested in looking at those, um, they are in the budget. Are there any questions about these programs? All right, great. So based on the feedback of these three work sessions, next week on March ninth, um, the plan is to bring forward the funding request as presented for your approval. As you are aware, there are still significant unknowns, especially with regards to the state budget. So we will plan on incorporating, um, known state budget impacts and any changes, and bring those forward in April, um, before we ask for budget adoption at the end of April. Are there any questions about this approach or timeline? So that's the end of the presentation. As always, if there are further questions or concerns, you can direct them to budget@k12albemarle.org.
That was great, Maya, thank you.
Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who, um, presented today, and everyone, you guys are all sitting together, so this flock of awesome employees, thank you for being here, and thank you for this presentation. I believe that is all the business, uh, all the work session that's left. Now we're at other business, but board members are the superintendent, and I do have a motion here, um, to make. I move that the school board of Albemarle County begin the collective bargaining process, and that further, the school board direct the superintendent and division staff to draft a collective bargaining resolution for presentation. Second. Yes, we're excited.
Are, are, are we trying to have like a discussion, or is this like a, are you guys gonna...
So typical process is, we make a motion, we open it up if anyone has anything additional they want to say, so if you'd like to say something, you can say it now, and then we'll do a vote.
I mean, I already stated my opinion last board meeting, in which I'm like, fully in support of collective bargaining. Like I said last time, I'm seeing like so many pros in it improving teacher and student life, that's like, I think it's a necessary thing.
So hearing no further discussion, which I imagine is because we had a discussion at the last meeting, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Can we do...
Voice.
Voice vote. All, I believe we can do that. Roll call vote?
Please.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Um, Chair Carlson was the second, Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
No.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff? Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
With a vote five-two, so moved.
That's great. So, um, we look forward to the resolution and the continued work that we'll have in partnership with our teachers. I'm excited, thank you. That concludes our...
Ms. Carlson, I need to talk to the board for a minute.
You don't get business.
Sorry. I promise, I promise, all right, I'm gonna come to the podium, I want Pat to help me out here. We just, we're just kind of having trouble with something here that we need to talk to about. I, um, I'm sure, I'm sure it's ad nauseam, so I apologize, but this is, you just can lighten up a little bit, it's just, want to talk about it, get some consensus from you on what to do next.
And Dr. Ross, I apologize, I do remember you told me you were gonna do this.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know, it's just a lot going on. Um, and this really is one of those things that, it's not, it, I don't think it's a hill to die on, it's just, we could, we would appreciate some input from the whole board at one time. As you know, about five years ago, while we were doing a lot of initiatives, that we, you know, we've been doing them all along around improving the high school experience for students, and the state at that time had also come out with a profile of a Virginia graduate, greater emphasis on... graduate, greater emphasis on career development, soft skills, all the good stuff we want our kids to be doing. So during that time, we said, well, hey, we've got a great idea, let's ask if we can get a waiver of state regulatory code, so that we are not required to add weight to AP classes and IB classes, so that students would, we just wouldn't have weighted grades. And in that way, students would choose what they want to take, not based on thinking they need a weighted grade, but they would just choose it because they want to take a fun elective, they wouldn't take as many study halls, because study halls bring down, or other classes bring down your grades. And so five years ago, we went before the state board, it was a very different, it was a, it was a nonpartisan board, you know, they were interested in promoting public education, and trying innovative things, and so not only were they supportive of it, but they voted that day to support it, they didn't even vote the next time. So as five years were coming up, Pat and I realized we needed to go back and have it waived again, because right now it's impacting, it would be impacting rising ninth graders next year?
Rising 10th grader.
Rising 10th grader. So we started, after we came back and got the, went out to the community, got a lot of feedback, positive support, we said we'll start, we started three years ago with sixth graders, because we do have some sixth graders that take a high school class, and they've had no weighted grades since then, which we can fix all that if we go backwards. But now we wanted to go back to do the waiver. Originally, when I talked to board members, I was pretty gung ho about it, but we backed off because there were ominous signs from, the governor had appointed five new members to the board, the state superintendent was against the proposal, and we just said, we'll just figure out another way to help kids make choices without weighted grades, or, you know, eliminating weighted grades. Then we waffled back and forth recently around it, because we just felt, we were hearing from counselors and, you know, other staff at the schools and saying, well, why aren't you guys gonna take that, go back and try to get the waiver again? You should at least try. So we said, well, we'll try. But then we've gotten more, basically what I would call threatening language from the policy people at the state level, basically saying, if you show up for this item, not only will you most likely get it turned down, but there seems to be this core group of agitators that gets tapped every time someone comes to make a proposal to the State Board of Education that runs counter to the current narrative, and they come out and do tons of public comment around it, make a big scene, and I was just, I've got concerns that not only will it get turned down, but it puts our board, and puts our school system right on the map, you know, for quote-unquote lowering standards. So that's where I am with it. I feel like we have alternatives that, for example, I talked to the former superintendent in Fairfax Schools, and what he told me was that when he was superintendent there, they just added weight to all the classes that you want students to feel free to take. So he said, what we did is, any second class in a series of electives, like art 2, you weighted, you add weight to it. The weights on grades mean nothing in terms of college application, what the colleges do is they run it through their own proprietary system to determine your GPA. Furthermore, with AP classes, they're, they don't, they're not concerned about the weight, they just want to see you took it, and almost all students that stay in an AP class get a B in it, regardless of whether they take the AP exam or not, so it's kind of like it just, you know, you took the class. So I'm not sure it makes a big difference, it was just a big statement we were going to be making to our students, that we want you to make your own choices. So I guess what I'm looking for is just consensus or some direction from the board, is it worth, is it worth it to you for us to go back to Richmond to try to get this through, knowing that it's not, probably not in a good faith for us to go there? We're not going to be given a fair chance. We also end up on the front page maybe of the paper again, or, you know, something like that? Or do you want us to just figure out another way to encourage students to choose classes not based on weighted grades? Sanuthi?
Question, what do you mean by weighted versus unweighted grades?
See, you know, you don't, it's so, it's so unimportant to students that, so, many, many years ago, under the industrial model of education, some people figured out that you could offer students more of a carrot to take more difficult classes, and so, at what was figured out was that, you know, if you could get a higher GPA if you chose to take an AP class or an honors class. And it used to be that all the, all the grades were all mixed together, so if you took a bunch of, if Ellen took a bunch of AP classes, you didn't take any, her GPA would just be way higher than yours by comparison. So when you were ranked, which we don't rank students in alma schools, and a college, one college was looking between the two of you, they would say, oh, well, she's got a higher GPA, we're gonna take her, okay? Now, we separate and we report your weighted GPA and your unweighted GPA, so that's one difference now, it's not all just mixed together. But if you go back and look, like in Power School, or you talk to your counselor, they can tell you what your weighted GPA is based on taking an honors class, or maybe you've taken an AP class, you'll have a higher weighted GPA than you will your regular GPA. The weights for regular GPA are 1, 2, 3, 4, and for weighted GPA, it goes up to 5 for an A.
Okay.
So that's what that is. But since we don't wait, since we don't rank kids anymore, we stopped doing that 10 years ago, it doesn't really matter, doesn't make any difference. So any thoughts on that?
Well, with that dire preamble about success...
Well, Pat, so here's the thing, Pat thinks now that the state superintendent resigned, we should go, right?
Yeah, I just like a fight.
He just wants to get, go up there and get a good fight. I mean, I like it too, but if it's fair, if it's a fair fight, you know?
I mean, what I would say, if the overarching goal was always to promote student choice in selecting grades, then if there's another root to that, let's take it. I mean, I don't know what you do, there must be some math you do to deal with our 12th, our 11th graders now, but...
Yeah, we just go back and we'll just build in the weighted system.
I mean, I would just look at what the purpose or the goal was, and see if there's another way to get there.
Yeah, I think the, one of the problems we were trying to solve is that we had students tell us, I wish I could take an elective class that's really of high interest to me, but I won't, because I know it'll lower my GPA, and it'll change my perception of how colleges will look at me. And so if we, as Dr. Haas said, if we look at a different model, where we start to wait more classes, we start to give kids weighted credit for sticking with an art class, staying in a band class, things like that, that can help be part of that solution.
That won't be adversely looked at by the state superintendent?
That's a local decision, we don't need approval for that. The only, so the only stipulation on weighted grades that has a regulatory code attached to it, is that you must wait AP courses and international baccalaureate courses. Everything else is up to the, to the school system, and one of the things you may have seen that Dr. Haas asked us to put together, was all of the school divisions in Region 5, and what their waiting practices are, and you can see that every single one of them is different. And so, and so that's why schools, when you're applying for college, they really have to strip everything out of your transcript and put it back in, so they could make a fair comparison.
One question is, how successful has this been over the last five years in terms of getting students to take more elective courses, or courses that they really would have wanted to take without the fear of having their GPA go down?
So unfortunately, we haven't gotten a chance to see that yet. The pandemic delayed this implementation a little bit, so our current ninth grade class is our first class that would have unweighted grades. Those students don't have a chance to take an AP class until they get to 10th grade. So I don't know that we'll ever be able to prove or disprove our hypothesis without the continued elimination of that.
If I remember right, there are a number of universities that really ask that students take the most rigorous program that their school divisions allow.
Correct.
And so one of the great things about this is, this is the most rigorous, you know, that we allow, without weights to it. I, you know, I get the local decision, you know, and if we're going down to fight, I'd love to come, but if we can figure it out in-house, I guess I'd be more in favor of that.
I think we can.
It's good seeing you, Dr. McGlaughlin, and seeing that you've recovered.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
I like a fight too, but I think we should just take the, use these rights. I really would like to, you know, confront them, but I think we really should just take the easier route.
Yeah, I agree, and I appreciate what you said, I mean, what I fear is that you go down, you do, you know, you do an excellent job, they still say no, and yet, and then we become a target, and you guys, and the whole division becomes a target for just things that will distract you from what we're focused on, and our students' achievement.
Well, and one of the things that we found out is they weren't going to let us present, they were going to present the information for us.
Yeah, I agree, I think this, that culturally makes sense, I guess, and obviously you'll do this as part of this process, but just finding out if there are any unintended consequences to this plan, but I'm looking at this Region 5 chart, and it really is all over the map, there is nothing consistent, and I think that, I certainly have the disbelief that things are consistent, so I'm glad to see this chart.
All right, I think we have... I would add on, I'm in agreement with the rest of my board, fellow board members, that there's no need to bring a fight that we're not going to win at this point, and have a distraction. I will say, it brings to mind something that I've thought of, which is, or talked about in the past, which is our guidance counselors and the work we do to get our children and guide them towards college, if that's the path that they want, and giving them good advice, because I will say, I don't think, like, that's a misinformation if a student believes that not taking art 2 is gonna somehow negatively affect their application at college, they should have better information about what colleges are looking for.
Yeah, and on the other side of that coin, one of the things that we're really encouraging our, our school counselors at the high school level to use this year, is based on a student's PSAT scores, they get a predictive value of whether they would be successful in an advanced placement class, and we know we've had disproportionality in students who enroll in AP classes in our division.
That was from a conference a few years ago, they were talking, do they do that in North Carolina? There's like a system in North Carolina that uses a PSAT, it's across the board.
Yeah, so it's from the College Board, and they put it together, and they'll say, based on the score, I think this student has a 60% chance of, or 70% chance of being successful in an AP course. And so we are really encouraging all of our high school counselors to use that to try to encourage kids who might not have normally taken a...
It gets rid of biases, it makes it just a set, if you can score high enough, you can do all right in honors or advanced math, or whatever, and yes, we should be doing that.
Yeah, it'll give them a list, we're sending letters home to kids, saying, hey, we think you would be, you'd be successful in these courses, and that's really designed not to get a kid to take a 13th AP course, who's already taken 12, but really to get a student to take their first, who might have never thought to take one.
Awesome.
All right, I think we got it, yep.
So, awesome, I've noticed that the staff corner has just, it's just... I know, okay, we are, it was supposed to be 28, we're a little behind, I blame Dr. Haas. I...
Dr. Turner.
Okay, Dr. Turner was fabulous, thank you, Dr. Turner. I call this meeting adjourned. There's one more thing.
I just wanted to call out, last week I attended the MLK Awards at Woodbrook Elementary, and the young students, the pride on their faces and on their families' faces, it just was wonderful. So I wanted to call Mr. Woodson and Principal Williams for a really touching event. I also checked in at the First Annual ACPS HBCU Expo and College Planning Workshop, which hopefully we can hear more about at a board level. I spoke with Mr. Irvin Johnson at Monticello and Dr. Wida Poe at Community Lab about the workshop. I believe about 100 people attended, about 100 students attended, and so I also wanted to commend Dr. Turner for his work on that.
And a quick shout-out to Ellen Osborne, we visited Walton Middle School on Monday, had a great visit with Josh and Tyrese and their staff, and I didn't take any pictures of the hallway, I wish I had, because there's, I haven't been to a school this year that has had that much student work posted around the school, would you agree? I mean, it was everywhere, and a really great business-oriented environment, kids were having fun, the teachers were very engaging, and we really, I mean, I had a great time.
That's good.
Yeah.
And I guess the last call-out is that many of us last night were at Monticello High School for the Virginia School Board Association, Regional, which gave a great presentation on how you can rethink around career technical education, and I'm sure we all took some great information away from that. I now call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.